Another good morning to ya, good later in the morning. So, this is the second study stream of today. We are doing a little hand reading practice where we just look at our opponent's range. Then afterwards, we'll do a little game tape review. Right here, so might as well just get to it after I do just a quick little bit of sharing on uh... On what do you call it, the Facebooks? And the Twitters? Hope you all are having a wonderful morning, or afternoon, or night, whenever you end up watching this. Uh, got the kids off to school just fine. The wife went to work, so now it's time to study some poker. Cool Beans, we are good to go, everything is fired up and ready. So, we are gonna do a hand reading practice on our opponent's range. Earlier, we did this queen-queen hand where we looked at our range and their range, narrowed us both. But now, let's see what we can do, um, we looked at every other position, all these other winning hands. What's another one? Uh, this is from Carbon as well. We have a jack-eight, which is a crappy hand in the small blind. We call and then call again. Let's see, then we check, we raise, and we bet, so oh! That looks good, looks like some good uh, some good action on this hand. It's a small pot, but at least there's some actions should give us a good opportunity to narrow uh, narrow our opponent's range. Hopefully, we shall see. Uh, oh, interesting, a heads-up hand right here, okay. So, we are looking, heads up with a player, we've got to assume they're an 81-8, they're playing a ton of hands. It's heads up, um, I don't remember this hand at all actually, but whatever it is, um... Yeah, don't remember even playing, I guess, I guess I started up a new table or something. Uh, and then he was already sitting, or he sat at my table, whatever, oh, I'm up a little bit, up to thirty dollars. So, let's get this going right here. Eight-seven-four-five-one-three-six-three. Dash-nine-three, great, so, uh... Jack-eight off. On the button, heads-up hand, let's see what happens here. Uh, so, we decide just to limp, it's heads-up, I just wanna see a flop. And I'm also limping right here, if, if he lets me see a flop cheaply, uh, I get to see it in position, which is great. Super passive player, so if I hit something strong, I can hopefully get some good value out of the guy. Uh, and then he raises, just a min raise, so I call, so what is in my limp-calling range? Uh, let's see here. Open limp-call, a min-bet versus a fishy eighty-one-eight player. And it's just heads-up, so, uh, oh, I'm sorry, not my range, we're thinking about just his range right now. His range is, we have the jack-eight... Uh, club diamond? Oh, we won't enter that yet. His range for coming in for a raise, he is an eighty-one-eight player, he doesn't raise a ton. Uh, but, it is a heads-up pot. I don't know about, oh, we can look at twenty-five percent and cut out. I think, if he limps, he's gonna want to see pots with a lot of... He's not gonna raise, maybe not those bottom pairs. Let's keep all broadways in suited and offsuit. Ace-nine, we'll keep him, let's put in all the suited aces as a raising hand. Uh, king-nine, I'm thinking he's often just calling with this stuff. Maybe just calling there, calling... All the broadways we can say he's raising with, cuz we can be limping with a ton of weaker, weaker crap right there. Um, raising sevens are better. Raising nine-eight because it's a decent suited connector, lots of players like playing those. Um, and maybe he's just trying for a really, really cheap steal as well. Uh, so let's, let's narrow him down to this, we can see overall, he only raises eight percent of the time. Um, but, we'll, we'll make him nice and wide, we'll probably be able to narrow this down, uh, quite well, I would imagine. So, twenty-point-five percent, two-hundred-and-seventy-two combos. And then we can't, uh, we definitely cannot take the, the, you know, aces and kings and stuff out of his range. Just because it was a min raise, I mean, he could be doing that in order to just start building the pot to hopefully, uh, uh, take a big pot later from us. So, we're gonna assume that he has all the nutted hands, as well as some of these weaker ones right here. Uh, we have the jack-eight, club, diamond. So, our hand versus his range, we only have thirty-two percent equity. But as you can see, before we made that call right there, we only need twenty-five percent equity. It's just a really small, you know, we're calling twenty-five cents to win a total pot of a dollar. Only need twenty-five percent equity, three-to-one odds, it's worth making the call. Um, and, we have position on him post-flop, so let's see what happens. Flop the gutter, double gutter, actually, a six or a ten right here. Interesting, so seven-five-nine, club, spade, diamond. On that seven-five-nine board, we actually have forty-one percent equity because we have a lot of outs, we have one over card as well. But actually, any hand that he has, uh, has a better... Any non-paired hand has a better over card than us actually. We have jack-eight, I mean, he even has jack-ten in his range, that kind of a thing, so, yeah. Um, currently, the only thing that gives us any equity at all is possibly hitting a jack if he doesn't have a jack. Or, hitting our straight, eight outs to the straight, nice. So, at this point, um, oh, well, we don't know their flop range yet, let's see what happens. He gets to act first, he just checks. We check behind, okay. So what is a checking range on this board? Dollar pot, twelve X behind. If he wants to get it all in, he's got to make some kind of a bet with... With his really good hands. Unless he has a set or something, he's probably raising all of his over pairs, all of his pairs, um... Or, all of his top pairs, to try to build the pot to win something. Because right now, it's just a dollar, I mean, he's gotta build it, uh, he's gotta bet to build it. So, sets, let's remove the sets from his range, because I think sets are, like I said, betting, um... Uh, betting to, to start adding, to start getting some value. At least fifty cents, just a min-bet to start building the pot. Two pairs are betting, over pairs? Yeah, those are definitely betting on this wet flop right here. Semi-wet, not two-tone, but semi-wet. Top pairs, I think are betting right there. Um, pocket pair below top pair? I would say those are checking, and checking, uh... First to act, middle pairs are checking, weak pairs are checking. Actually, his sets might check. Because he's first to act, he might check those. Gosh darn, because he checked, I mean, can he really be checking his over pairs? I think over pairs gotta bet, but sets are so strong, he's not worried about anything. It's not like a monotone or two-tone flop, um... Cuz oftentimes, sets are scared of flush draws. Sooo, let's keep those in his, we, we gotta keep some strong hands in his checking range. But I think the over pairs and the top pairs right now are probably betting. I would say so, out of position, um, just to get us to fold some over cards. Uh, in case they hit on the turn, he wants to get value out of us now. Get us to fold those, or get value out of us for those. But pocket pair are checking, middle pair, weak pair, ace-highs are checking, no-maid hands are checking as well. Um, gut shots, over cards are checking, so his two-card backdoor flushes, okay. Yeah, I would say those are checking as well, so, most of his entire range, gut shot plus an over card, what is that? Jack-ten. Those are probably checking as well. I mean, look at that, this guy is checking a wide, wide part of his range. Eighty-two-point-three percent, I would say is checking here, um, so, uh... Eighty-two-point-three and a hundred-and-ninety combos. And this is... That range right there. I would say that's his, I would say that's his range. Pretty, feels right, feels right, all those over cards and stuff, some draws and everything, yeah. Uh, so, a hundred-and-ninety out of two-hundred-and-thirty-one starting combos, it's not a big reduction in his range, um... But, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's at least a little bit that we were able to reduce. And then plus, we probably should've bet here, with the one-over card and the double gutter, uh, we're in position, we could probably just take it down now. I think we should've bet, I think I, uh, I let him see a free turn. Um, oh, nice! Nice turn card, baby! So, let's see, what is that, the ten of hearts? So, we hit our nut straight right now, which is great, we're susceptible to like, jack-queen for a higher straight draw. Um, or if he happened to, I don't know, if he happened to does have a, a set of something, then we're susceptible to a full house. But really, we love this card right now, we have ninety-six percent equity at this point. Um, so, we've gotta start building the pot, we've gotta put money in there. He just does a min-bet, so that's a really weak hand, most likely, I mean, if he would've made a straight as well, let's say, let's say he had six-eight here. Um, oh, six-eight flopped the straight actually, so, jack-eight is the only other straight that he could have, that he didn't flop a straight with already. So, yeah, I mean, he's, that's definitely a weak bet, so, we bet, or we raise just to get value out of the guy. And he calls, so what bets and then calls right here on the, on the, uh, turn? Um, sets. No, sets are not betting and calling, sets are betting and raising to get value out of us on this wet board. Um, I really think so. If we have a jack, if we have a queen, if we have like, queen-ten and jack-ten and jack-nine and queen-nine, we have a pair. We're probably gonna be paying him off with his set here, in order to, uh, just try to catch a straight of our own. So he should be raising with his set, so, check-calling is not a set. Two pair. Ten-nine, he didn't necessarily have to bet, yeah, I think two... No, I think two pairs are check-raising, or bet-raising as well, not just a bet-calling. So, really, I mean, we've gotta put them on top pairs? Sure, all those weak tens and then suited tens over there, yeah, those are calling. Mid pairs, I think those can, um, bet-call, because we showed weakness on the flop. Just because the ten hit doesn't mean we have a better hand than the mid pairs just yet. We could be trying to use our position because he showed some flop weakness. Um, so I could see those betting and then calling two to Lee. Weak pairs now, eights, pocket, okay, pocket ace, well, we'll keep them in the open-ender. But as weak pairs go, the seven and the five, uh, possibly calling, he is a super passive player, maybe calling one street with those, let's see. Um, ace-high here. Not betting and then calling, unless he has some kind of a draw with it, so, open-ender, let's say... All those various, okay, yep, yep, so those are betting and calling. Gut shot here. A lot of these have a pair plus a gutter, they have over cards like the ace-jack suited. The ace-five suited. So let's remove some of these. Or the ace-six suited. Cuz that's an under gutter, it's the low end, he just needs an eight, and it's just not a good draw. But everything else is a high, a high gut shot. Or a pair with a gut shot even, yeah, so let's keep those, let's keep the rest in, so we basically just removed four combos right there, that's it. Over cards are not betting and then calling, they're betting and then folding right here. So I think, uh, I think this is his bet-calling range, for sure, we took out some of the strongest hands, just got some weaker hands and some draws. So, a hundred-and-nineteen combos, so sixty-eight percent, a hundred-and-nineteen. A small bet, then weak call caps. His range to top pair, mid pair, and draw hands. I think so, so as of this point right here, I mean, we obviously made our straight. We limited him, limited, we, uh, reduced his range to some cards with still some equity in it, but we have basically a lock on this hand. Um, it would've been great if he would've raised right here, then we could've re-raised and just got it all in, won his twelve-dollar stack. Uh, but, you know, doesn't happen all the time. Things don't happen the way you want them to, the way you dream for them to. So, the king hits the queen-jack, uh, makes him a higher, what was it? King of diamonds. Um, so he does have some straight draws that suddenly hit a straight, the queen-jack-suited, queen-jack off. Could beat us right there, but, I mean, even looking at this, just with that card hitting, not knowing what he does, we have ninety percent, eighty-nine percent equity. There ain't no way we're giving up here, if he hit a miracle river, runner-runner. Uh, cuz it's a runner-runner straight draw with the queen-jack, if he hit that, so be it, we'll, we're paying him off, there's nothing we're giving up to here. Um, so he checks, and he bet two-twenty-five, so we're looking for, uh, just kinda max value out of the guy. But let's see, what does he check here? The pot's only three dollars, he's played it passively up till now. Let's see if we can't figure out how good our bet is and what we should be betting for value. He checked, is he checking his straights? I don't think so, he doesn't wanna miss value right now, he's gotta bet at least two dollars, uh, just to try to get some chips out of us, so he's not checking a straight. Um, is he checking two pair? On this board, what are they, king-ten, king-nine, oh, they rivered the two pairs, so no, he's not checking those, definitely not. He loves those hands, he's definitely betting those right now, it is a wet board, there's a lot of different straights out there. But so be it, he hit two pair, he's gotta be betting. Um, at least going for thin value, a dollar-fifty or two bucks. Oh hey, John Dime, John E. Diamonds, I'll check my email later on, thank you very much, uh, right after this, I will buddy. Uh, let's see, the two pairs, over pair, top pair hands. King-jack, king-queen, uh... Yeah, I mean, why not just check-call, he got lucky on the river, hit a pair, it's not a super-strong hand, um... And I showed some aggression on the turn, he's probably check-calling with those top pair hands right there. Pocket pair below top, oh, none, middle pairs? Oh, the various tens, yeah, yeah, we've played it pretty passively, we showed a little bit of aggression on the turn, but not much. Those are in his checking range for sure. Um, weak pairs? Weak pairs are in his checking, ace-high, so anything below, these are in his betting range, everything else below is in his checking range. So at this point, um, eighty-six combos, seventy-eight-point-nine, so seventy-nine percent. We just gotta follow from Serge KSS, thank you very much, Serge. Sweet! So he's checking all but his two pair better hands and calling a lot of those, so, we've got to go... We've got to go, we've got to get the monies! And what was his, uh, range here? Nineteen-point-seven and eighty, no, whoops, eighty-six combos and seventy-eight-point-nine. So, we've effectively narrowed him down from two-hundred-and-seventy-two combos pre to eighty-six, so, we've taken away roughly, uh, three, two, two-thirds pot, uh... Two-thirds of his hands, he has a lot of hands right here that can give us value. You can see, we have a lock on the hand, he has nothing that can beat us with that river check. So we've got to be betting for value, and we bet two-twenty-five, which I, which I like. It could be on the high side, but this guy's so passive, he could be calling with any king that hit any ten, maybe even any nine right there. So, let's just assume he's gonna call, which he does. And let's see what he has? Queen-ten off, I think that is in the range, sweet! So queen-ten off was a... Middle pair? Was a middle pair hand. Cool Beans, so we hit him, we nailed him, we got... Uh, I would think max value, I mean, maybe we could've bet full pot right there, on the river, a full three dollars, but, that's a little hefty. A ten, I don't think would call, but, at three-quarter pot, we got some value out of the guy. So great, that was a success, I love it! Sixteen out of twenty-two, pretty good record, what is that right here? Seventy-three percent success rate on hand-reading. I love it! With a jack-eight off, calling and then calling pre-flop, good stuff! Alrighty, so, um, we're gonna do a game tape review right now. This is something I do every single week, I record a game tape of just about thirty minutes, sometimes I go longer, but... Recorded thirty minutes this time, and what I do during the game tape is... Alright, so what I do during the game tape is, I'm basically talking through all of my decisions, I'm watching all of the action, I have a certain, uh... Uh, I have certain strategies in mind that I want to employ, and I'm thinking through my actions, I'm looking at my opponents, looking at their stats, trying to figure out what they're doing. Um, all that kinda stuff, so, that's what I do during the game tape, so, I record it once a week, and then in the next session, the following day, I watch the game tape. So I recorded this on the twenty-fifth just yesterday, so this is a perfect time to go through and watch the game tape right here. Um, you can find this link, uh, I'll send it out in the email... My daily email that I send out after this, so you can watch the game tape for yourself. So, for those of you in the, in the, you know, watching the stream right now, I really appreciate it, and then so, we're gonna watch the game tape. I will pause it as I go to make any comments, but basically, what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for mistakes that I made, or things that I missed, or... Or maybe, um, I should've three-bet, or I should've stolen, or I should've folded when I called, and maybe there's some stats or something, that kind of, uh, are in... That, that I should've seen ahead of time, so I'm looking for mistakes, definitely. As we watch the game tape here, so, here it rolls, and for those of you in the, on the stream right now, if the audio sounds terrible... Um, or if you just can't hear it, let me know, I can pump up the volume. Hello there, got some game tape going right here. Uh, two different tables, just gonna talk the game tape, doing this for just thirty minutes, uh, cuz we're gonna review it. Later on, so at this first table, I'm surrounded by two lags right now, New Wave is a, I think a lag or a tight-aggressive player just now coming in. So on this table, because of these two lags, look at this guy especially, seventy-eight-thirty, getting very aggressive. Um, we are gonna tighten up pretty well against him. I haven't seen any three-bets, but he comes in for a lot of raises pre-flop. Um, so we're going to see if we can't flop some really good hands with some good, strong, pre-flop starting ranges against him. Now, um, Box Chocolate, we've got two tables, or we're, we've got him on two different tables. Looking to, uh, uh, play rather tight as well, because he is pretty aggressive for the most part here. We got a tag, a lag, a loose passive right here, what's his stack size? A full stack right here, good, so this is the guy we wanna play against. We also wanna get in hands with him, uh, with a definite, hmm, with a definitely a strong range pre-flop. So we wanna see hands here against these two. Min-open, three-bet right there. I like those assessments I just made, just looking at the table, looking around, seeing who the opponents are, and figuring out who I can most likely make money off of. Coming in for the small blind open here, good, he folded. Didn't necessarily wanna get three-bet with king-nine suited. So a min-open and fold from Box Chocolate. Okay, and a call right here, so good squeeze. Well, this is a good sign, when a player comes in and the first thing they do is just auto-put out their, um... Their, what do you call it, uh... They, they post a blind right there, it often means that, uh, that they're a fishy player, you know? Most good players in regs will wait for the big blind to come around, as opposed to paying money when they are, you know, in an early or a mid-position. Definitely gonna call right here, he could've been making some raise and hit something really good, but, uh, oh... Yeah, he could've had a better ace than me, um, so, I was just gonna play that one passively. But now right here, this is just a straight value, but I think he can call with some, uh, weaker aces, he can call with under pairs and stuff. And he's shoving with a queen, wow, look at that! Okay? It didn't... Yeah, in that instance, um, I don't know that he had a queen, but I'm just kind of assuming so. A lot of players like to shove and then over-shove to make their play look bluffy. And, you know, I had aces and queens with a jack-kicker, well, uh, he came in for the min-raise pre-flop after posting the plot, after posting the blind. He could've easily had ace-king, ace-queen right there, and just went runner-runner for an awesome full house. He just trying to, uh, trying to look bluffy right there. And, uh, you know, I bet for value, but he just demonstrated that he had a lock on this hand. Why wake up on the river, most people don't wake up on the river with a bluff. Um, they come in for their bluffs earlier in the hand, and, which, which he could've done on the flop, or, or, you know, bet big on the turn, that kind of a thing. And he didn't, so, um, so I have to put him on a queen there, for sure. Or even just an ace-king, a better ace than me, but I don't think anything but a queen would make that play, trying to look bluffy. Going for value. Raise pre-flop, limp-caller. Nope, I just gotta follow, thank you very much! I didn't see the name, I apologize. Ten-shaker, I don't know anything about you, don't know anything about you. Let's not raise here and play out of position versus two unknowns, let's see what happens here. See if I can't get a read from this point. From this point forward on these two players. Not gonna defend, Steven SD's a good player right here. Limp pot, nobody showing any aggression here. Couple of draws complete that could've played passively on the flop and turn, um... I mean, if I had any pair if I were Shaker, I would call right here the pot-sized bet, cuz Wizard could be doing it just as a straight bluff. Um, if I had, uh, not a four, if I had a six or a ten, I would be calling there, six or a nine or ten. Speed this up just a little bit. So I definitely, uh, just was not gonna play that, no matter what. Hmm, and a three-bet over the ISO, this is a pretty good play right here. This is often going to be, uh, a weaker hand, because this loose-aggressive was isolating this guy, so you made a bet to make him fold, but, he does not like to fold. Full pot-sized bet, oh yep, you like your hand actually, so it wasn't a bluff. You like your hand, you have ace-king, ace-jack, pocket, now, I don't think pocket kings would be doing that, trying to get an ace to fold, so... Yeah, oftentimes, his three-bet over an ISO raise is bluffy, it can be bluffy. Um, but obviously, right there, he liked his hand, full pot-sized bet on the turn, or on the flop, ace-queen-high flop. Could've been a pair plus a flush draw as well. Play a little... Twenty-one Pilots music. Yep, I'm a big fan of Twenty-one Pilots. Flush our king. Could've been a bluff, I guess. Out-of-position bluff. Actually, that sounds really weird, speed it up, let's just cut it down to normal. Raising out of position, you should call. I want some action, I wanna see what these two, um, not-so-strong players play with. Yeah, right now, as I'm reviewing this table, or this, this game tape, I'm kinda looking back and forth between the two, between the two tables I've got going on, and seeing, you know... I'm possibly, my mind might be focused right here, but, while I'm playing, but right now, I wanna look at the other tables too, to see if there's anything I'm missing. Maybe I'm good, missing good spots because my focus is on one table as opposed to the other. So I'm just trying to watch all the action that's going on on both tables. And it's a lot easier to do when you're doing it with game tape, because, you know, you're not so... You're not under pressure right now to play a hand, to make decisions. I'm basically just observing my own decisions, to see if I'm making mistakes. So it's easier to observe two tables at once when you're not having to make decisions. We need a shorty. Wow. What is that about? Not too bright, I don't know that you're getting any value there. Pocket sevens or eights, pocket sixes actually and fives, not knowing what to do. So at this point, I only had six hands on the guy, didn't know how he would respond to a small-blind steal, so I made the steal. But the flop comes absolutely nothing from my hand, right, just an ace-high, no kind of really good redraw or anything. Sure, got a backdoor, you know, runner-runner straight draw with a queen-ten, but, really, it just wasn't a good situation, so I didn't throw out the c-bet right there. Of course, that opens up the opportunity for him to bluff bet on the flop, but... So be it, you know, in general, I like to c-bet, uh, especially when I'm out of position. When I have really good equity, when there's a lot of cards that can come on the turn to help me. And, when I just have just straight plain equity, you know, I flop a set, I flop two pair or something. Uh, that's when I like to c-bet out of position, so, good semi-bluffs, or just a good hand going for value when I c-bet out of position. I'll keep that in mind, a pot-sized bet, let's see what you do for, in regards to pot-sized bets later. Now I don't put any stock behind these raises. This could be... A very wide range. Doesn't even mean I wanna three-bet a ton, but, um, I would be calling a very wide range versus this player. Especially suited cards and connected, that kinda stuff for sure. Um, betting my eighty percent of a straight flush right here. Last time I checked and folded to the pot-sized bet, this time, he might read a bet as strength, especially on a scary board like that. Won't be too happy. Opening, good, we got a good caller right behind us right here. Not a fan of not having position, but, uh, this is looking like we're gonna see a flop, set at our price right here, hopefully a three comes out. Now, I could raise and rep, but I was opening right there to hit a really good hand, didn't hit anything, ace, deuce, deuce, I got a lot of callers, sure, there's not many deuces out there, but there's plenty of aces in the range right there. So you don't, you only fold 40%, but let's see what you do, I raised ace on the flop, pretty good fold equity, I think.
Yeah, like I said before, I could have C bet that flop and just repped an ace, but with three callers behind me, one of them has an ace, and they're not gonna give it up lightly, and, uh, it just, it was just a straight bluff, I was, I made the initial raise in the first place with pocket threes, the reason to raise, there's two reasons to raise right there, you either take the pot down pre-flop, or you raise and then you hit your set and get value. I missed my set, um, it's not a great board, so I just got out of there, yep.
It's a good sized pot, so two pot sized bets in a row, so that's a.
That's a surprising hand.
Shaker's a slow playing ace, ace, you too, slow play. Wow, how interesting.
When I say slow play in regards to wizard right here, slow playing queens, um, generally, people will three bet with pocket queens pre-flop, especially when they have position over the, over their opponent, and you can see as of right now, um, 37 hands in, I'm pretty loose aggressive on this table, he should be treating me as loose aggressive player and three betting. But one of the weird things is, he called with one, two, three, four players yet to act, I think, maybe just, yeah, four players yet to act, or three players yet to act, he made the call, which just, I mean, I guess he probably made the call in hopes that somebody with three bets squeezed, but he also made the call just with the danger of getting a lot more callers beyond him and then go into a flop multi-way, and you can see what happens, the ace hit on the flop, you don't know if your queens are good anymore, and, uh, it just, it just makes for a dangerous situation when you slow play those big pocket pairs pre-flop.
I'm typing in cash, short stack, slow play. I don't think, yes, I guess slow play is kind of the right word, but it's more like small blind over call. With ace, ace.
Yep, so it's good to note on a player like that, that in a situation when they shouldn't have pocket aces, or even kings or queens, that they can show up with it, um.
Risk takers right here, but you can see that in their stats, they love to see flops, they love to get there with hands that, um, that you don't suspect.
I don't know how well you can see it, but he is a 50, looks like 50 slash eight, and he's a 36 slash nine, so like I'm saying right now, they love to see flops.
And then they, uh, uh, and then they, you know, double up through you, what is this, queens? I'm shocked. Double up and then a double up again, huh? Good for you. Open limp shove, sweet. Thanks for making a play like that, now I know what to make of your, um, open limp, over shove.
Cool. Forty three seven. So my, my open worked over here, but ace eight.
I mean, you've got me.
Didn't work.
Beat pretty well, it only costs a dollar to win 635, one to six, I mean, I need like 17%, 16% equity probably.
One for 635. 16% equity, hey, pretty good.
I'm gonna call, I don't like it, but I called to get into a hand with these two super weak players. Super loose aggressive, but still very weak, just by looking at the stats, and super loose passive, very weak, oh, you have a great hand right there, way to bet pot sized bet and, uh, get no value for your nut hand. All right, definitely have to add chips here, because we've got some great players to target with practically, well, practically a full stack, but a full stack, another one with a pretty good sized stack, I've gotta have, uh, more chips in order to win more from them.
Yeah, in general, you see that, uh, not in general, just I don't have the auto top up option turned on, uh, and I never do, and one of the reasons for that is, every time I see somebody auto topping up to the max buy-in, I just automatically know that they're a reg, and, uh, I just, I just automatically know that they're a reg and they play a lot of tables and they're just, you know, they're like me, they're a reg, and then so I do not do that on purpose, because I don't want people to automatically sit down with me, see it happen, and then 10 hands in, know that I'm a reg, you know, I'd rather them figure out that I'm a reg, you know, 50, 100 hands in, um, as the stats start to accumulate and they see my actions, I'd rather them not know ahead of time. So I top up just as necessary, it's normally when I'm down to like 17, 18 dollars, give or take. I don't know how much that really helps to disguise my player type or status or whatever, um, but I just imagine it helps, so I do it. You can see a lot of these.
Great, man, we're getting so much action, so many players to the flop, every flop, huge pots on average.
Yeah, so you can see $7 average pot over here, $1 average pot over here, uh, a much better, more profitable table to play on. Although, bigger pots could equal more variance.
It's a good name. Nice. Short stack, but still. I love seeing limpers. Limper right here too, uh, yeah, I'll just check, um, hmm, gut shot, plus the nut flush, let's go ahead and bet. If they call, I've got a lot of cards that can come, I can bet again, possibly get a fold, um, but I do have the nut flush. Hit the flush ace high, paired the board, I think he would have woken up with some, with a set ahead of time, so I'm ahead of everything. I don't think I'm losing, so I want to bet, and bet enough that he can shove on me with a weaker flush. So, just making a half pot bet, hoping that he gives it up, 40. He called with a pair of fours? Odd, okay, good, great, thanks for doing that.
Totally. Hey, dull geek, thanks for joining again, yep, yeah, sky times two.
It's possible that if, if I would have bet more, um.
You just joined dull geek, but, uh, thanks for coming in, I, so I've got my game tape going on that I recorded yesterday, and then me, uh, in the white shirt is my game tape from yesterday, and the gray, the whatever pullover is my today shirt.
You know, I'm getting called no matter what by him, and I want to see a flop with these two, I am not gonna build the pot just yet. Actually, I have such a great hand, he's calling with so many weaker aces, I should raise here, um, cause if I hit, I can get extra value now, because he's playing so weak. Oh, and then you limp raise, what is your limping, limp folds, limp call, limp raise zero? It's over 3X, I'm just gonna fold here. I don't know what his limp raise means yet, normally he limp calls or limp folds.
Yeah, so oftentimes limp raises just automatically, I often think aces and kings, just about every time, uh, just limp raises are, are aces and kings, not always, but quite often, so, uh, I just had the ace queen right there, it's the first time out of four instances, this is the fifth, the first time I've seen him limp raise, so I'm just gonna put him on a good hand, and then, but I'll look out for it in the future, if he does it again relatively soon, I wouldn't be folding right there, I would come in for the five bet, or just call and pay, and play post flop right there. But oftentimes, when a player makes an out of ordinary, um, aggressive action like a limp raise or a check raise, I'll give them credit, especially if it's at the beginning of our relationship.
The first time limp raising out of over five instances. Which is limping here. Eight out of 31 times, so eight times he just limp calls and then folds, and then he finally limp raises, one out of eight, that, that's equals a good hand, and he's going to be aggressive post flop, I didn't want to get to post flop play out of position with an ace queen suited. It's just not a good winning, uh, it's not in general, just a good winning opportunity to be in, so.
In a four bet pot, ace, queen suited, not super good normally.
Just betting for value here, I can get called by a lot of weaker kings, hmm, I guess a king, queen is in somebody's range for sure. Ace, king as well, some players could be playing that for just a call, pre-flop instead of a raise, but I've got to expect that I have the best hand here, um. I don't see many draws, I, I could see like an ace, X, kind of a hand calling on the flop, as well as weaker kings, king, queen now has a better hand than me. Um, I guess they had it on the the prior street as well, but I'm still betting right here, because whatever called me on the flop and turn, the queen didn't complete any hands. Um, so they called on the flop and turn, they could call with some kind, some kind of weak sevens, eights or nines, that they called on the flop and turn, and they still don't believe me, so I think I'm getting value out of plenty of hands there with that bet. The queen's not a reason to not bet, if I'm getting value on the flop and turn, I'm getting value on that river too, so.
Yeah, I agree with me right there, the only thing that queen could have helped is, uh, pocket queens, that just played passively the flop and turn because of the king high board, um, but then, you know, if they had pocket queens, I would have known, I mean, they could have come in with a raise earlier, but they would have, you know, definitely min raise or just shoved on that river, and I possibly could have folded, but I probably would have called, there's only three combos of pocket queens anyway, once a queen hits the board, there's only three combos left, so, three out of the whatever, 100 plus combos he could have had at that instance, um, it's just not, it's not worth worrying about, you know? And he could have been calling, like I said, with a ton of weaker kings, as well as those under pairs that didn't believe me.
Oh, good, he auto, auto rebound up to 25 bones. Lovely. I could put busted dimes on a pretty wide range right here, somewhere between 20 and 30%, I don't know anything about the guy, but it's a cutoff open, only nine hands, we can put him on that. Um, that range has plenty of broadways in it, plenty of aces, plenty of every pair of course. Um, so on that flop right there, he, he, he had a decent flop, it wasn't the best, queen, nine, seven, but the thing is, your opponents that call, um, when you make that open on a queen, nine, seven, they don't hit it super hard. Sure, there's a few two pairs and pairs and pair plus draws and open enders, but really not that many, so it's a pretty decent flop to be C betting at. New wave is a solid player, um. It's possible that he could have been raising just to ISO him, but ISOing out of position, um.
While I was thinking about this hand, I missed this other hand, where Pilch actually was able, as a short stack player, was able to actually make a, uh, double barrel bluff and a shove while at that, or a double barrel bluff, um, going all in, with just a king high hand, so that's something that I missed, um, uh, and I can definitely take a note on eight Pilch about that. And, I believe I will, cause I can always add it to poker tracker, uh, after the, or right now, after the fact.
It's possibly could have, I think he had a, a good hand to do that with though, like pocket nines are better, or a solid ace, like ace, jack are better. Oh, only 25 cents to win a dollar fifty, he's one, and six, I mean, he's only 17% equity, but it's a jack seven off. He C bets 88%, I don't like it. Just feels like a waste of money, it's a waste of the big blind, I'd rather save the big blind.
And actually, at the same time on, when Pilch made that bluff shove, he called the short stack all in, on an ace high board with just a second pair, ace, nine, X, X, whatever it was, so I should make a note of that as well, M K K K K K. 24, alright.
If you listen to Ed Miller, Ed Miller talks a lot about pre-flop, good hand selections, and be suited. 65, pocket eights. Yeah, I'm down with that open, of course, 65 in the small blind calling, 65 off, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that. Or was it 65 suited? Don't remember, hmm, 16 eight, you're pretty nitty in general, I'm not gonna try a three bet steal.
Actually, versus that 16 eight player, that's actually probably a pretty good time to three bet steal, because he's a tight aggressive player, like how I often am, um, uh, we steal a relatively wide range, but only continue versus the re-steal with a smaller range, so, my assessment just then of not re-stealing because he's a tag, is not a good idea, um, uh, I should be, I, I should not have a super wide re-steal range, but if I have any kind of good blocking hand, like a ace, X suited, or king, X suited hand, I should be making the three bet there, um, just to try to take it, try, try to take it down right there, cause you can see versus steals in general, when he's in the blinds, he folds a lot. Um, but versus re-steals, foldy people just fold against re-steals a lot as well, so I could have done that right there.
I'll steal here. Lot of three bets, not so much, not so much, it's over 3X open, let's fold. He's been doing a lot of limping, so I'm assuming a raise like this, under the gun equals strength, but 33%, oh, maybe not though.
Yeah, I think I should have called there with the pocket threes just for set mining. All I needed was $17 in the stacks behind for my 20X rule, so, should have.
Let's see who opens here, see if we can't follow a hand from start to finish. Now, do people just make it 85 cents because other people do and they don't know what they're doing? So you open, you don't open a wide range, you're an MP, you have a strong range, lots of broadways, you po, quite possibly have a king or queen in your range. Lots of ace, X hands and pocket pairs as well, they don't like to see the king and the queen. And you bet a full pot sized bet, you have a king, you like your hand, guaranteed, guaranteed, full pot sized bet again, you have king, queen, two pair. What did you call with? The 10 completes the jack nine. King 10 could have called that flop two with, you know, pair, 585, yep, you like your hand a lot, ace, king, or better, ace, king or better. Betting too much is not gonna get you value, well, it can, versus players that just can't fold, I guess.
Hmm.
See, now you're limping right here, so limping equals weak from this guy, pretty darn sure of it. Turn to gutter, bottom pair. I don't see any reason to bet at it. Check behind, it's just fourth pair with a gut shot. On a really wet ugly board that I don't have a redraw at, other than the, uh, gut shot. Which even for my gut shot, it was two tone board, so I don't, there's only two eights that I like there. Are you gonna raise? Well, this is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna limp here, and the reason why is because I want to see a hand with these two. If I flop a miracle hand, I could possibly get a ton of value out of these loose passive fish, so.
Loose passive up here, loose aggressive here.
Because the goal was to see. Because the goal was to see a hand with these two fish, and, uh, didn't hit anything, just giving it up here. We can mark this one for review.
Alright, we're almost at an hour for this stream, so I think I'm gonna end it as soon as I, uh, get on the button here, or on the big blind.
Just to see what he would do, and now he puts out a full pot size bet, I'm, I'm not gonna compete, but, um, what does that mean, is, is that just a bluff? Got to figure out what his pot size bet means, and what his bigger three X, uh, eighty-five cent opens mean. I'm definitely putting him on a hand that he likes right there, so if he opens the three X, I don't think he's folding, he doesn't like to limp fold either. A great player that you want to see flops with right here, this guy too. So I'm gonna keep doing that, hoping to hit something good. But I'm gonna give myself better chances, queen seven suited isn't bad, not a great hand, um, king three off suit, definitely not good. Hit a king, not happy, hit a three, not happy, hit a flush draw, eh, great, king high flush draw. What are the chances of that hitting and getting value?
And you can see on these two tables right here, I'm a little bit more loose-aggressive than I normally am. Uh, just found some good spots to be getting aggressive here, which I love when that happens, when I can find good spots to be aggressive. Up a little bit here, down a little bit on this table.
He does have a really wide button opening range. Forty-eight percent of the time, and we get a three bet right there, we can expect to fold most of the time, he's making a good three bet. And he might've telegraphed his hand strength with his min open, as opposed to a three X open. What is his, raising of the good, nineteen percent, fold the three bet, raise and fold from early position, forty-three percent. I'm gonna try it. Two seventy-five, raising it up, 'cause I think he's definitely capable of stealing under the gun. And then he called, but we do have some, uh, decent, uh, equity here. Making even four bucks, sixteen big blinds. Jack eight six doesn't necessarily hit his, um, well, it hit him now for sure, he likes his hand, he's got a set. Now, do I want to try, I can't shove him off of his set, he's not... Yeah, I can't shove him off of his set, he's definitely not... I three-bet pre, he puts me on a strong hand, uh, he's got a great hand, I can't get him to fold, so if I shove there, I'm just shoving on a draw? I have zero, I think I have zero fold equity right there, so, I'm not gonna shove there. I bet that-
Yeah, that felt, that hand right there felt like a shove or fold play, it didn't feel like a call, the pot was gonna be so big no matter what, he is, because he made that raise, he's getting it in on the turn no matter what, there's nothing I could do to, if I just called right there, and then check the, uh, check the turn, he is definitely shoving at that point, um, and then, so I'd have to fold if I didn't hit anything, and if I just shove right there, he's calling no matter what, so, I'm calling on a draw, basically. And that's just not how I want to enter a pot, that's not how I want to get all-in on a pot, calling on a draw, so I think that was just a fine play, I like the bet, I like the c bet on the flop, uh, because I do have a ton of equity, with a lot of equity outs, if I hit a hard, if I hit a king, if I hit a, what was it, a queen, a jack? I think I had the nine, so a queen, a jack, or a ten, whatever it was, there, there were some cards that can come out to, to give me gut shot draws as well, so, um, it wasn't a bad spot to hit, it wa, it was a good spot to semi-bluff out of position right there, he just happened to hit something really good, come in for the two X rate, two and a half X raise, and, um, uh, uh, it just, it just was not a good spot to continue right there, he showed aggression, he loves his hand, he's not folding to a shove, so, you know, I don't want to shove with zero fold equity, I'd rather have, if I'm shoving and bluff shoving, I should have some fold equity at least right there. So, you know, it happens, got caught right there, well, thank you very much for everyone for watching, it's been about an hour, so I'm gonna, uh, take the day off for the rest of my study, maybe play some poker later on, so you might see me streaming some actual poker play, but, uh, thank you very much, so, I really recommend for yourself, get open broadcaster software, OBS, or Camtasia, whatever, record your own sessions, thirty minutes at a time, and then review them later on, to see if you can't catch some of your own mistakes. Alright, thank you very much, everybody, and I will catch you on the flip side.